Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
You have been here in this city for which stands one nation. In this world with everything.
All right. First item on the agenda is the adoption and modification of the agenda. Is there any modification of the agenda presented? If not, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'm with you.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do we have any conversation or discussion about it? If not, please vote. Next up on our agenda is the consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of insight design meeting minutes for July ninth, twenty twenty five. Regular session minutes for July sixteenth, twenty twenty five bills for payment for August twenty twenty five. MU partnership for educational renewal, MOUs. MWSU early college academy program agreement, BU scholarships, MOU. Contractual agreement with Blue Springs. Multi district deaf and hard of hearing program. Innovation learning, MOU. Addendum for rental bus procedure. Proximal agreement, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six comprehensive assessment plan. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six SSD literacy plan. Supplemental pay schedule for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. And approved personnel report. All right, do we have a motion to? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to ask if Julie publicly for item eight point nine, if you could talk about the agreement that adds value and benefit to the employees. So the public would know what we're doing for them.
Um, so this is in conjunction with our. Turn again. Um, so this is in conjunction with the insurance pool and was an opportunity brought to us through the pool. In Platte County where they are opening the new wellness clinic adjacent to the wellness clinic is an orthopedic medicine center. The this benefit is a partnership in which we are asking that the district contribute four dollars a month. Um, to the premium per member. And in the event that an employee would need a musculos- musculoskeletal procedure. They, if they have it at the service center there in Platte County, they would be eligible for a fifteen hundred dollar rebate directly back to their pocket. Um, and so it will, in addition to that being the employee benefit. Um, on the insurance pool side of things. We could drive down our costs between thirty and fifty percent. Um, and save on claims if they go to that center. Clarifying questions?
Yeah, yeah, I just sometimes people don't read. And if they could publicly know our benefits, that might help us to recruit.
Yeah, and we, um, we plan to do a lot. Once we have approval, um, we have promotional material ready to go out to staff. In the staff newsletter, we'll put information in the lounges and then invite everyone. To attend when the Platte County Wellness Center opens on September four. It opens on the second. We're doing an open house on the fourth. Um, and so we're going to send out and invite folks to go with us as well.
Any other discussion on consent agenda items? If not, please vote. Okay, next up nine point two superintendent update.
Yeah, thank you so much. We would like to start this evening off with celebrations. We're going to do it a little bit different this month. Every year we've been able to have our principals share about kind of the first days back to school. Not only bringing staff, but now we're through our second day. And I'm pretty sure for the second day in a row, the kids showed up. They went home and as far as you know, we're dropped off and we haven't gotten any phone calls that says they weren't. So two successful days, but one of it's celebrate them this month. Allow each of them to give a report. Then I would like them to come up and shake hands afterwards with you and I'd like to get a picture with them. Denise is going to share on behalf of Horizon. We just had some conflicts there and some things going on that they had to take care of personally. So Denise, thanks for doing that for us. And I'm not sure if anyone. Did you guys play paper oxygen? Steve got to go first. Todd gets to go first. I'm new here.
Want the microphone?
So. We get, we get into school here, most schools started off. I'm willing to.
Okay, I'm gonna share a story that Adam Roski shared with me that I think does a good job of exemplify middle school. So. First day of school, there was a young seventh grade boy who was. Walking down the hallway and he sees Mr. Roski looking at him. So he begins that, you know. Strut that little seven awkward strut that those seventh graders do and he starts strutting by. But even though his body's trying to act cool, in his eyes, he had that lost confused look. And so Adam goes. Do you know, uh, do you need any help? Do you know where you're going? He was like, he looked at him kind of smirked, said, I got this. And so he continued to strut by. Adam said he watched him. He strutted for about ten more steps and then. His strut kind of turned to a little bit of a, of an unsure waddle. And then pretty soon he. Was like looking around and then he did a three sixty and started to come back, saw Adam looking at him. So he started to strut. And he gets by Adam and Adam goes, are you sure you don't need any help? He looks at him, goes, I got this. And so he keeps walking and. Pretty soon he gets to the intersection of the hallway and Adam said he just freezes. Just freezes and nothing, not going anywhere. And pretty soon he starts looking down at his schedule and looking around. So Adam walks over to him and says, I think you might need some help. And the young student kind of stutters and stammers and goes, yeah, I don't got this. I'm completely lost. And so I feel like that really does a great job of epitomizing middle school. Our kids are. Have this kind of awkward confident uncertainty and that is what middle school is all about. But eventually they'll find their way. And I have confidence in that because we have great students, amazing staff and wonderful parents. Our motto this year is stronger together warrior forever. And if we as parents, students and my staff work together. Like I know we will. As a warrior family, we're going to be successful. We're not only going to be successful, we're going to thrive this year. So I'm super pumped about this year. And I'm excited for, um, what we're gonna be able to accomplish with our kiddos.
Okay, so going into a second year, as building principal at Maple, feels a lot different as a first year, I will say. Uh, so I was excited to go in with knowing more rather than knowing less. And excited to see how all the things, you know, that we had planned for the summer were going, going to kind of take off and. The building, it just has a very positive energy. At open house, you could kind of see that from the very beginning. People are excited to be back in the building. We got a lot of comments on how great everything looked. Um, we put a lot of things up to kind of make it look more elementary school. You know, you want things on the walls. Um, and the teachers did a fantastic job in their classrooms. Things are, I mean, they do way better than I ever did when I was a teacher in the classroom. I don't know how they come up with what they come up with, but. And then from there to the first two days of school, I mean, the energy is so positive, but yet calm. Kids are in classrooms are happy to be there. Um, I, I did have a student tell me that he remembered me from last year, which I thought was a, a good thing. I said, I, I remember you too. Like we're in a good spot. That's, that's positive. Um, he noticed I rearranged my office. I said, that's all good. Do you like it? He said, I do. It looks really nice. Thank you. I, that's the first thing I did this summer was rearrange the office. So. Um, it's been, it's just been a great start to the school year. Um, I feel like everyone is just, you know, really excited to, to. Get the year started and to accomplish a lot this year, so.
Well, I'm at a disadvantage because I have a staff member here who can negate everything I said if she so chooses. I, I know you could just, just look at her for, for. Saying what I'm saying is true. Uh, tone and energy for the building is just awesome. Uh, our, we did a lot of revitalizing inside Eagle Heights. It's a lot of white walls at Eagle Heights. It looked very sterile clinical. And, um, I did a lot of personal painting myself. God heard my cry. I want to work for the maintenance department. So. That's what I did. We painted a lot of walls and put some, our lounge got revitalized and. Staff are very appreciative to just have it have a little burst of life. Um, cute are another celebration that's, uh, is transportation. I know we joked about it at the beginning. In my fifteen years in Smithville, this was the smoothest transportation dismissal ended at four o'clock, four oh five today, a parent pickup. Buses were out of the lot at three fifty. That is unheard of. Not one kid was on the wrong bus these past two days. And not one kid went the, not one kid was in parent pickup that should have been at bus. It was just awesome. Funny story. Okay, um, we have a new sixth grade teacher, Amy Pringle, who is awesome. She's ex military and her story is amazing. Like she was teaching. Airmen how to read, like comprehension strategies before they pass their test to like. Be on a plane, which as an American makes me feel so much safer knowing she did that. And like. She's, that just tells you who she's very militant, but also warm. And she was talking through like the cell phone policy with our sixth graders. And she was like, so this is what the policy is. And one sixth grader, well, what if there's an emergency? What are we gonna do? And she just Jedi mind tricked them. There's not going to be an emergency. She's like, well, what if there is? And then a student, you know, she's been to war. I bet you can handle whatever. Whatever emergency you think is gonna happen. And she said, you know, if there's an emergency, it will be up to me to determine if you need to get your phone. I may make that happen, but that's why they put me in charge. So I thought that was just really funny and believe it or not, almost zero pushback to anything cell phone her later these first two days, which I'm thrilled. What our building is most excited about for twenty five, twenty six, we are. Starting the resource for, uh, for ELA today and they are excited to have something that is just. Something they're sinking their teeth into. It's a lot, but I'm confident that it's something that's gonna only make our students better readers. Um, and better with comprehension strategies and vocab and morphology. I'm thrilled at that. And just staying the course for systems we have in place, just refining them. For behavior management, for SEL, a lot of good stuff happening. And Leah, correct me if I'm wrong on anything. Perfect. All right. You can stay employed.
All right. Good evening. I'm Scott Moore. I'm the principal at the high school. Um, I don't know that it's a question about what's going on over there or what's exciting because really I think the construction kind of is the theme. And so really I'm just, I want to make sure that I share. We have received amazing communication from the people in this room. Um, Dr. Collins, Dr. McGinnis. Um, even when we've had challenges that we didn't know that were going to occur, we were able to kind of really come together and talk about that. Um, but then also bringing teachers in over the summer, um, bringing our admin assistants in over the summer. No one balked and said no with that. Um, and it was really, I guess it was really neat to see the culture of a couple of years of bringing our staff together. That when you asked for that over the summer, it wasn't about, is this career ladder? Is this, what's the stipend to do that? And there was actually even a few people that commented like, oh, coming in on your free time or coming in and doing it for free. And our teachers were able to respond like, no, I want to be advocating for our kids. Um, not saying that it's bad otherwise, but I don't know in two years, I could have gotten the participation in the summer decisions that were being made. Um, so over at the high school with the construction, as far as like the challenges which have been, um, you know, hallways are dead ends that didn't used to be. Um, students are just as confused sometimes as the adults, but I still think it's, we're in a place of wonder together. Um, and that's the neat thing about our new staff. We brought in four new teachers this year, but they're learning our building new with us. They're all veteran teachers and we specifically make decisions like that. Because when you're going through such tumultuous changes, it's hard sometimes to bring brand new staff on board. So you're looking for people that can. Give some feedback and give some value into those conversations. And so we've been able to do that. Um, kind of one of the surprises though, that's kind of came out of it for the first time. I sent. Dr. McGinnis an email today and just kind of asked him to think about this and Mr. Winterbore, but you know, we've had cheap students challenge us with like CD players. Can I bring CD players to school? Um, can I bring a cassette tape player? Um, you know, those are things that I think in one sense, we're kind of like, hey, they're kind of going back to that. But then. You know, what is the, you know, what is, what are we trying to accomplish? And how do we want to make sure we're still supporting our students? And so I thought that was a surprise today because it was a student literally brought out the Discman, had the full wallet, all the CDs. Um, had the corded earphones and essentially was able to advocate for the why. Um, but ultimately it was kind of like, that was kind of a surprise. I don't know that we would have been kicking at that old school. Um, but no, the high school has started out, I believe seamlessly. Um, our school is so clean in the areas that they took care of. The construction companies that have been in our building have been extremely kind, um, have been super friendly. Um, we've had multiple staff mention how kind they are. Um, the folks that are kind of the leaders of the construction check in with me on a regular basis when they see me, if nothing more than just to make sure I'm okay. Um, but as far as a building, I just feel like we were able to communicate with our staff and our students on what to expect. But no one really knew until we're living it. We're living it now and we're okay. Similar to kind of what Mr. Orshlin said, like dismissal has been amazing. You know, we, the first day of school, we had all of our students in within fifteen minutes after, you know. When buses started arriving and all of our buses were off campus today, probably within fifteen to twenty minutes. Um, but still being able to go in and look for ways to, to, to tweak things to make them a little bit better. But it's been a great start over there. We have. Um, I, I can't say it factually, but I believe we have more students even this year than last year participated in fall activities, sports and clubs. Um, I believe right now we have more students enrolled in some of our advanced courses and that all happens over time. And so just lots of things that we're celebrating over there at the high school. But the first one is. Construction's been okay. Um, and some of these guys' cell phones, I, I have not had one contentious or persuasive argument with anyone about a cell phone, student or adult alike. So, thank you.
All right. It's my pleasure to, it's my pleasure to get to share on behalf of Horizon. And Chrissy shared some words with me. She said, everyone's been very positive, upbeat and welcoming. They're excited and I haven't checked her numbers because I just got them that there's fifty nine new students to Horizon this year that have never attended school there before. So I'll. I'll check that. We know that I've heard from other principals too. We have new families and kids moving in. So we're gonna do some number running on enrollment, but that's exciting. She had a story she wanted to share. She was hanging out. They've been trying to get in all the classrooms and spend more time in the classrooms, her and Nicole. And she said, she was hanging out with fifth grade today and they were doing a Kagan structure called takeoff touchdown. You take off if you agree and you sit down if you don't. And Mrs. Jendy said, I love Italian food. Do they agree with that or not? And. Just only a few students stood up, so they must know what she likes. And they said, okay, if Italian food's not my favorite, what is it? And a student said, well, I think it's American food. And she said, okay, which one? And they said, Mexican. Chrissy just shook her head. And what they're most excited about, she said turf with several exclamation points. They're really looking forward to the turf playground. Um, getting to spend longer times in the classroom. That was feedback that they're working on, making sure that they're in there. And hopefully earning tier two and three PBIS awards. That's a goal for them. And they're very excited about the CK, CK LA. Resource that they have, PBLs and students having more voice and choice in their learning this year. So. I can attest, I've been in all the schools. Things are going great and it's gonna be a wonderful year.
It'd be interesting to see if, uh, you know, what, what's the best growth year we've had, you know? That's gotta be pretty significant.
I've. We, we have it accurately on the September count date.
Yeah, yeah.
Every time, but I've, I've started going back and looking and. Over the last two years, I've started tracking every month.
Yeah.
Where we're doing it. And I'm very curious as well. I think we've, we, we will see. And a little bit of what Zonda shared several Januaries ago, where we could see that fifteen to twenty student as a. As a consistent piece moving, moving forward when before we've been a little up and down.
Yeah.
But it seems like. He may be a little Nostradamus for us. He's also someone that we've engaged about some anticipated growth and some of the. Building areas that have been done. We're trying to set up another appointment to reengage with him and have another follow up conversation. But I, and we, it is unique that we are seeing this growth specifically at elementary. For instance. All of our growth in that twenty students last year occurred in grades K through six. I would like to invite the administrators that shared up, so invite the board in front so we can have a good picture. Denise, do you want to represent Horizon for us?
If you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead. A little Christie ballin' over. Now you guys get to go through and do the awkward shake. That's all of your students. Justin. Thank you. You guys in the middle, let's go. You guys go, get in the middle. Get in the middle. You don't get stuck outside. The other group that we always want to thank at this time of year are our maintenance, custodial and technology departments. What they have done this summer, you know, Scott mentioned having to work around all the construction. And keep the building that was going to be workable and livable, clean in. You know, at Eagle, they had the, the turf that's installed coming in. Horizon's getting ready to do that. Then it'll pass on to Maple. It's just been tremendous. It's been so much work by them. I don't remember a wetter June. Usually I feel like all of our lawns dry up in July, but this year it just kept. Kept hanging on and Justin's team did a great job of staying on top of it, not only cleaning, but mowing. And then Randy and the tech department did a tremendous job. There's a lot of work to be done at the high school. We're taking out that main artery that has been the school and there's a lot of rerouting of. It's called the voltage, but think of data alarms, intercon system, so much that we're having to work around through there. So those teams just did an exceptional job. If you, if you get a chance to see any of them, please thank them. It was, uh, a long, hot summer in many ways. I think everyone's looking forward to the cooler weather this weekend. A couple of other updates. The, there is a, the governor appointed a foundation formula task force. Their goal is to have a new recommendation in December of twenty twenty six. Uh, but there is a lot of conversation going on. I would encourage you guys, usually MSBA will, will put some updates out there for you. There's. Two superintendents on that committee. Dr. Jeremy Tucker is on it from Liberty and then Eldon Superintendent.
Pat Davis.
Uh, Dr. Davis is on there and I believe you went to school with him, correct? So I feel like we got some inside track on, on those groups. One thing that is nice and. I worked with his son, so I feel like this is okay with a gentleman that worked on the previous formula in two thousand and five. His name's Dr. Thau Huber. He is on this group again. And he is someone that is just numbers and formulas and everything. It's, it's exactly who he is. Actually, it's someone tell me. That, yeah, they still talk to him frequently, but they have to email his wife. Cause he does not check email. But his wife will communicate to say, hey, call this person. Uh, so just something to keep track of. And then the House put together a committee and it's done several hearings for property tax. Great hearings throughout the city. Kansas City hosted theirs last Wednesday at Union Station. They had hosted one in Lebanon and then also in Jeff City. The, they are simply open to the public usually for a three or two minute testimony and then they're able to answer questions. So. Just things to make you aware of that have, will have big impacts on us moving forward. Another one that is, um, not on here that I wanted to share, but Meta had their official opening of their first H data center today. So they call it buildings one and two. We were able to go in and it's a beautiful facility. One of the things that was amazing is they let us walk straight into a server room. We, we walked straight through. Where all the servers are stacked, there is an area in between where it sucks heat up. It stays about eighty, eighty-five degrees in there. It is not super cool, which is not, I, I think I expected it to be cool. Cooler. And then in that little heat tunnel, it's easily over a hundred degrees in there all the time, but they try to be super energy efficient with it. Uh, the other thing I didn't realize is that when you're in one of the server areas. Every server, which is servers, kind of that black rectangular box, exactly what you imagine, it has a different purpose. And they have servers coming in every day. New servers coming in. So it was interesting to see. It was nice to be a part of. We were not able to take pictures of everything, but they actually encouraged us to take pictures. Of most things. They was like, don't take a picture of the serial number of. The server. I'm like, um, you have to tell us that. Maybe we shouldn't have been invited. It was a, a good experience. They did a nice job and. I was able to meet Stephanie Seeger's, that is their community partnership outreach. We are actually planning on getting together next week. To continue to identify ways that we can continue to partner. Um, so that was a nice thing to go to. I want to thank you all in advance that are able to attend. Um, but had a conversation with New Kirk Novak as well as Insight Design. But next Thursday, we will be bringing you guys the next phase of the enabling work. And this focus will be on mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Data, intercom, phone. Fire, door opening, all of those different things. It's very. It, it's not neat to talk about or do, but it all has to be done before demolition happens. Uh, they think that that will take about five weeks. Uh, to do, to complete, which is a fairly quick time because everything runs through that main hallway. But they will bring that to you next Thursday for you guys to approve. Then they will mobilize everyone to start in September. Um, the plan is still to finish that up into four to five weeks. And then after that, we would be bringing package one point O to you, which would include demolition. Would include demolition and ordering steel. So, uh, want to thank you guys all for being able to do that. I believe that meeting is going to be at five next Thursday, correct? And then just, uh, you know, reminder to please mark your calendar and all those that are listening on September seventeenth. In front of the high school, we're gonna host at four thirty a groundbreaking ceremony to celebrate all the projects that we have going on. It'll be four thirty. We'll have a rain plan as well to adjust in case it rains. We will also have the ability of people that want to walk through the old foyer. One more time, New Kirk and Novak will be there. Uh, if, if people want to walk through it. Um, and then we have been meeting with a couple of different companies to maintain the warrior head. Figure out how we would lift that out of. The floor that was donated by the class of sixty-nine, the first graduating class of the school and then also move the bell. Right now, the, what we hear from. I hate to say it, old timers, but I'm one of them. Stacia's not there yet. She's still too much younger than me. Uh, but the tradition of the bell is that it rang at graduation. So since we are hosting graduation at the. Field each year is to move it down there by the flagpoles. Uh, we have the ability to do that. We even. Um, talked, Justin and I did with a group that would come in and refurbish the, the bell as well. Clean it up, sandblast it. And if we're gonna relocate it, go ahead and do that. We'll get cost to see if. That makes sense or not. And then maintain that warrior head. Then there's two other monuments in the front of the high school as well that we'll maintain. One is next to the flagpole. That will be placed back when the new flagpole is. The other is next to a, a tree. So we'll find another tree that that can go to, but. Did want to give those updates. Uh, Dr. Collins will also be sharing several pictures as well. That we'll be able to repost on Friday for our board highlights. Be happy to answer any questions. Anything I should.
Okay, uh, next up nine point three Navitas and Bond project updates.
First of all, I would like to, uh. Thank everybody for their flexibility as construction has continued. So there's a, there's a ton of people in this room that, that thank yous just continue. Navitas, we'll start with the lighting projects. I don't know if you have been to the high school parking lot. I don't know if you have been to the high school parking lot yet and seen the light, the lighting projects. It, it's pretty nice. Uh, they have optical eyes on top of them. So when the sun sets to a certain level. Um, the lights come on and it's very nice and it illuminates some of those darker areas in the, in that parking area. So uh, that project is complete on the HVAC front, which is a little bit larger project. Um, you know, we have units going in Maple and obviously on the high school, six out of seven have been installed in our running. One unit left over the library and it's going to take a little coordination at this point because there is a crane involved with that. And so you just have to be very careful about how we do that, but um, little coordination to get that last unit put up on top of the library. Um, on to Smithville High School. Um, again, it's more coordination with a crane. Uh, it, we just definitely, the, the goal is to minimize distraction and disruption. And we've been very bullish on um, AC needs to be functional during the school day. So it'll, it'll get a little challenging with that, but we have um, definitely will continue to work with Navitas on when to get those units out. On to bond projects, and I do have a slideshow after this as well that we'll just kind of go through. But um, on to the bro, bond projects, we talked about package 0.0 uh, being um, at its end. The tangible results there, we see the pack entryway is done. Um, you know, you see some doors blown out of gym. I don't know if anybody's been into the gym area. Um, because those areas are going to be cut off to anybody being able to travel through them. Uh, so that temporary uh, entrance is built. Uh, there will be doors on that. The doors aren't here yet. It has just been uh, supply and demand and logistics. And so when they get here, we'll actually have doors on that gymnasium as well. New Kirk Novak, they have the temporary fence around the front area, but that fence, once uh, demolition starts in October, will extend. Along this whole sidewalk and they'll want all this area here at the front. So that's pretty much where we are with the bond projects in the high school. As we head into others, uh, elementary playgrounds, uh, there's some celebrations to be had there. Um, Eagle Heights is completed. Uh, very exciting. Um, got to do our last walkthrough there and commission that playground into. Being ready and um, as you can tell there at Horizon, um, things are moving along smoothly. Uh, turf has been ordered. Actually, I saw a couple of pieces of it is down there. So once they finish the rock base, the turf is pretty easy. And we're headed for um, that September 12th date of completion for all projects. And Mammoth has been great to partner with and they've been very reliable and you know, rains, sunshine, they, they are there working. And uh, it's been a great partnership. Uh, there will be a little bit, we cover there about the baseball softball fields, um, and finalizing those final stages. Uh, Dr. McGinnis or Dr. Moss, I don't know if you want to chime in. Uh, about what's been the, one of the most impressive parts of the whole project is how IDS has met with our staff. And incorporated our coaches and incorporated everybody they can into making that design look the way we want it to look. And that goes for classrooms, that goes for anything else that we have done in this project. I, I feel like the involvement and input from our stakeholders has been a priority for them. And so kudos to them um, throughout this process. I do have some photos. I would like to thank Mindy for helping me put this together because I wouldn't have got it done anyway. But um, I uh, would like to just start at uh, slide one. Uh, there's just some pictures of our elementary playgrounds. There's Eagle Heights completed. You can see uh, the Maple playground that is not completed in the Horizon in uh, construction phase. And that is even gone farther along since these pictures have been taken. Um, middle school layout, uh, we, we obviously are talking about the middle school in summer. We know some of the projects going into middle school with the bathrooms and media center. And some different things going on there. We're all would say, I think Mr. Winterboard would tell you, we're all very excited about those projects to get completed. Um, moving on to the uh, next slide there was the softball and baseball complex. Again, the input has been fantastic on designing that and designing the concession stand. And what that's going to look like. And we're nearing the end of our design phase with the final um, product there. Uh, I will tell you, we are very optimistic about Mammoth working on the soil. I feel like the preliminary results of geotek and survey, we don't have final, but are very positive, I will say. So we're hopeful that that project will go smoothly. And the next slide we have. You can get to the. Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I can.
You can touch the layout.
Yes, layout, layout. Um. Again, the, the kudos goes to the IDS team about designing these classrooms. And I really feel like they've really honed down uh, what we're looking at in the final stages there. Of, you know, the, the classrooms and the design there, administrative offices on the front end. You obviously see the library and the media center. Um, that is a complete demo and rebuild. Um. You see your culinary facts and bio med classrooms in the front. Uh, media, business and engineering on the backside of that. Uh, as you know, that commons area to the left, as you were looking at your screen, to the left is uh, the area that will be getting the heaviest demo. And we're very excited about what that would look like as it opens up an area to our, to our gym. Uh. There is a restroom there too as well included on the backside of it. So you can see that. And I think we're getting very, very close. I don't, I don't know how Dr. Moss, Dr. McGinnis feel about the, how close we're getting to a good, solid project design. Uh, but I think we are nearing that point. So. Well, I mean, electrical, mechanical rerouting starts in September. And the demolition where you're actually going to see the tangible result is, is right there in October when they, you know, start demolition. The next slide, I don't know if it's on time, but I'm going to go to the uh, layout of the ag shop and project lead the hallway. Now there are some uh, question marks within this one, as it is still in a design phase. We still have to get through the high school primarily first before we get to that. But it still is, uh, there's still meetings left to have about the design of this area and what programming is going to incorporate. Uh, but it is still on the radar. And I believe I am at the high school entry. Um, I want to make sure I draw attention to that. This is an architect rendering. Nothing is final yet. Uh, we are just making sure the front of our building is looking like we want. So we're materials, another step. We're just trying to make sure whenever we order steel that we're ordering the right uh, you know, measurements and dimensions of things. So this is not a final product. It's just a rendering, just something to give everybody an idea of what the front of our facility could look like with input still being taken. As we move along. High school foyer, I, I really enjoy this, this photo shop because I, I feel like it really. Uh, speaks a testament to how open that space will be and having the multiple layer and being able to see the grind. Um, it's really a, a good looking product when you think about our gym. Which will be on your right hand side there. The coffee shops on your left hand side and out, out the front of the windows, you're seeing that open space. And how much it opens it up for our students. Um, I think we're all pretty excited about that. Last one, and I think I may have one more after this is the grind and the trap store. Uh, there's been a couple of different designs on this, but this is the one that we've landed on with the open format. Uh, will also be used as a concession stand as well. And you still see um, an area for display for uh, t-shirts and merchandise to sell there. Um, and you have the stairwell leading upstairs and again, a lot of window, oh, letting a lot of natural light into the building. This is just another rendering. Um, again, we haven't settled on the final colors and materials. So I'd encourage you not to look too closely at that, but just what you would be uh, see when you look into the counseling office. Which would be the room that has the green tint to it and down that administrative hallway is just letting you see the openness of that. The media center. Media center, wow, what a difference. And again, windows accessing natural light. It was one of the requested items from our students. And I think they did a fantastic job giving us a rendering and a good feeling of what that would look like. The nighttime photo, I'm not so sure. Um, we do have parking lot lights now, so. And I don't think it's going to be that dark at any moment. So um, it's just, it's just a visual. What our building could look like and will look like. And that's what we took it with. So. Um, that, that is pretty much all I have on projects. Um, does anybody have any questions for me as far as any of the projects proposed?
I know you said that they met with the coaches for softball, baseball. And I, I don't know if they finalized the decision based on that meeting or they're still working through it, but I think that's awesome that they're. With the coaches. I mean, they're the ones, they're using it in their best opinion.
And, and Dr. McGinnis, you may speak to this a little better than me, but it was very, a very tactical meeting about their direction of field pointing and everything. So I don't know if you want to elaborate on that a little bit.
It was. I think each coach, we had scheduled about a half hour. I think they took about one hour each.
Yeah.
I mean, we got down into how far you need to hit the ball to center field to get out of the park. Like it's that level of detail that they're talking about. So it was really good because uh, we learned a lot in those meetings. We came in thinking, okay, they've been talking about this and then they had some different ideas. That sends our design team back to the board to make it happen. So it's really productive and it's not over yet.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on Navitas and Bond projects? Okay, uh, next up 10.1, general financial review.
Nothing to, that stands out in July. The one thing I would share that. As Karen and I, we meet every week just to continue to talk and discuss the budget. And she's actually submitted the ASBR, which I think is really impressive for FY25 already. I think you shared that it may not be told end of September that we hear back, but at least gives us an idea of where we're at. We're very excited. We continue to have over 96% um. Pay rate for property taxes in Clay County of our citizens. So that is in Platte County and Clinton, that is a really high rate compared to many districts. That's the second year in a row. That's one of the things that we use to help us budget for the upcoming year. Uh, the other pieces are all fairly consistent. What the state has been paying is, is as anticipated. There was the $10 slight adjustment down in total SAT. If you remember a couple of months ago, I shared that's less than $30,000. So the total impact's very minimal. And so at this point, we have not heard anything. We got our first DESI finance memo today. We have not heard anything different than them fully funding the formula. We have the rate for um, the classroom trust fund as well as Prop C. Prop C is the. The lottery tax is the best way to describe that. So everything is moving forward as anticipated. We'll continue to work and monitor and thankful for Karen and her diligence and everything. And making sure that we're always staying on top of things. Happy to answer any questions that you guys would have.
I have none. Next up, board subcommittees, Nichols.
Yeah, we had our finance meeting tonight. Um, started off by reviewing our finance data goals that we put together and referenced our budgeting functions. Um, so we just reviewed where we're at on, on pace for those. We've definitely seen some growth towards our goals. Um, you know, in those 2,300 to 2,999 functions, uh, we talked a lot about our, uh, it's, it's kind of stabilized. But we've, which is interesting because we've had a significant uptick in investment in our security. Um, so that was one thing we talked about uh, in reference to our top 10 of 22 area districts as far as salary schedules go. We're hoping to have that data soon, next couple of weeks. SNA should be reaching out and then we can get that data compiled and see. What sort of jumps and leaps we made from our investment last year. Uh, Dr. Moss shared with us the post DOE numbers. We had a little over a 20% increase from Clinton, which isn't very uh, much as an aggregate total of our income, but hey, we'll take it. And then Platte uh, settled somewhat on a uh, little bit of an increase. And uh, I guess the main thing for the board is we are looking at our DIAA policy. So, which is in reference to our reserve ratio. So uh, Karen is going to reach out to MSBA and start that conversation, have them draft up some language for us. Um, and we should have that next board meeting. Uh, just going from having a set target to changing that set target. As a target over a three-year average, just to tell balance out um, our ability to, when we have an aggressive year. Be able to wash some of that out so we can stay in compliance of that uh, policy. So we should have that next board meeting from uh, MSBA to look at.
Any other uh, conversation, discussion? Board subcommittees. Okay. If not, uh, next up 10.3, uh, CLP lease purchase agreement. I have a motion to approve the CLP lease purchase agreement for Navitas. Um, Navitas projects.
I moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Uh, do we have any discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, next up 10.4, I have a motion to approve the New Kirk Novak Agreement Amendment 1 as presented. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion on that? New Kirk Novak Agreement.
I just would like to know the slight amendment that was changed from like a 9 document to a seven. I'm not an attorney. I'm assuming our attorney's reviewed that. What is the slight change of it?
Yeah, this document was not ready from New Kirk at the time of July board meeting, but we didn't want to inhibit the work. So they had the details of the work all laid out as far as our guaranteed max price and those things. The AIA agreement is more of a construction focused document that basically lays out everything in those. Uh, last six pages into a formalized document that's AIAs in a. To, we did have our legal review it and they're just, it's a construction document for lack of a better term. Uh, and in back of a little better way to describe it, it did not change anything with our max price. We actually are going to be uh, anticipating lower than hitting that 206 by quite a bit. And it is just formal, for lack of a better way to describe it.
Yeah, I was going to ask the second question was, is there an increase?
There is not, and we were looking at, I would say at least $40,000 under. That price. And that's a thank to the high school team as well. When we got that initial layout, this was not things that will be kept past. The bond and they said, you know, we would rather take that money and invest it in the bond work. So I, that, a lot of that credit goes to Scott and his team for helping us make that decision and craft that answer.
And you still feel good about that decision?
No.
It's awesome. Yeah.
Mr. Moore.
Dr. Moss, is it accurate to say that this is an addendum, not a replacement?
Yes, this would be an addendum. Before they had had a letter of recommendation that laid out the terms, the AIA document more specifically lays out the terms.
This is the first addendum.
And we'll. And this would be the only amendment to this, because we'll move on to package 0.5 next week.
I have a question. Tell me if I missed. Um, a concern someone brought up was, oh, the gym floor is going to take all this wear and tear. Are we planning for that? Um, what this?
They bought a mask to go over the gym floor, particularly on what is the west end. On the north end, there is more concrete, but yes, we have masks that can go over that to protect that floor. Yeah.
Good questions. Any other discussion? Uh, please vote. Next up 10.5, I have a motion to approve MSBA 2025B policy updates for the second of three readings. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Second.
Very good. Okay, so if there's no other discussion, please vote on MSBA 2025B policy updates for a second of three readings. All right, next up 11.1, I have a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 property insurance renewal as presented.
Remove.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I, I have some comments and probably some questions. I remember when Ian was here and even when Dr. Newhart was in that position, I had several concerns that we had not put out for in our Q, our P for the insurance. And the rates continued to go up and um, I was assured in one of the public meetings. um, I was assured in one of the public meetings that we were going to do that in the springtime. Um, that we just needed to get through that period of gap. And so um, I've asked about it a couple of meetings ago again, and we still don't have that. So we're just now up for renewal again without doing our due diligence, in my opinion. It's our job for the taxpayers, money we need to go out and ask for an RFQ. That's my comment.
You're asking for an RFQ for the broker?
For the
For the insurance.
For the insurance to have it be bid by multiple people. One of the discussions that we had before was, you know, it's whether it's insurance or whether it's going to a mortgage broker, anybody, the same person can shop one thing, but the volume of business they do depends on how much they get the rates for. So you know, and the example I used was if Whitney was a insurance broker, she could shop it out to Progressive and all these different companies. Susan might own a company as well. She can shop the same companies that Whitney did. Whitney may do a higher volume of insurance sales, so she may get a better rate versus Susan. So the purpose of that is to shop different brokers, even though they're shopping multiple companies. It's not the same thing. The true proposal would be for them to shop a different entity, not just the same person running through their system.
So the reason we did not go out to RFQ is on, is just me. I did not, ran out of time, did not make it a high enough priority. So I'll certainly own that. I, they did get six responses and reached out for, Donelli did reach out for six responses in this. I understand that you would like multiple brokers done that. We already have an RFQ that we're putting together for our next, which will be work comp. Um, will be our next insurance piece, but we didn't get it done this time. That's my responsibility.
But they had said that back in September and then they were going to do it in the springtime. And so I think that would have been a priority for our, our money to be well spent to get those proposals done. And that's what was, I mean, publicly discussed and that's what was told was going to happen.
Joe, if I, if I could add, I don't mean to cut you off. I've spent an incredible amount of time in the last few weeks with insurance. So I just hope, uh, thank you for taking this. It's not anybody's fault. Timing's just not been great. And so I'll kind of interject for you. I, um, I have prepared, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it with a late ad to the board packet. And, um, on there is a PDF. It's a PDF of a seven-year trend. And I was hoping that you'd have a chance to look at that, but I don't. If you haven't, I apologize because it was a late ad. It's something I plan to keep up with, with the Board of Education. And just so you can wrap up your brain around how this property and casualty is working. I highlighted some areas real quickly. You'll see some green columns. Uh, you'll see some annotations at the bottom that, um, you know, Warrior Athletic Center was built, the Transportation Center was built. You'll see those trends of property taxes really spiking. And if you look on the back page of this, um, it tells you how much of a conversation we're having. Eighty-one percent of the conversations about property. And, you know, everything else, I mean, in the, in the retrospect is relatively inexpensive. The property has been the one area, just as a superintendent coming from another district, I had the same conversation with my board and it helped to have this visual demographic for them to look at, even how it's calculated. So when I called Mr. Donelli, it, it, it was late. Um, this process, I would love to have about two months to get it done. I don't know if I've even been here for two months, but I would like two months to get it done, just to get the numbers, another month to get it. So I need a three-month head start on this to get it right. So when I asked him to call and bid in the interest of time is the rate. And you'll see this magical seventeen point four cent number down there and you'll see how it's calculated. And I said, I want you to go out and just make as many phone calls. Can you beat that number? Because if you don't beat that number, if you come in twenty cents, uh, per hundred where everybody else is, we're looking at a forty grand increase. And I don't think that would have been popular either. So is this going to get better? I can assure you it's going to get better. And I want to, you know, I can't keep focusing on COVID and what happened to property values. We'll drop off two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty and we'll just keep building from that. But yes, I would like to be more aggressive. Am I comfortable with how we bid it? No, because I need more time. I'm comfortable that we did do it. Uh, we were, uh, rejected from Star Insurance Tokyo Travelers. Chubb came back with a twenty cent Midwest Public Risk came back with twenty cents. That would be unfavorable for me to come in here and ask for a forty thousand dollar increase on top of what we are just looking at. So I think we have a good handle on it. Mr. Donelli, and he's been fantastic working through this. Um, we talked about even something as far as raising a deductible again, but you know, property, you've gone from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand. You raise that deductible one more time, a hundred is the next rung and that is catastrophic loss. And, uh, don't know if that would be worth saving another ten grand. So we have to consider these things. And I really did, and I'm not trying to have you feel sorry for me, don't, but a, a lot of time in this document. Take it. If you have any questions about anything, just, just email me and I definitely will explain to you anything I know about insurance and what has gone on around the state, because you can just Google it, Missouri School Insurance. And the, the, you know, the blockers will come up from all the stories that are out about it and people are doubling right around us, Liberty, Blue Valley, everybody. And it's just been something we haven't been able to get our hands on, but I, I am comfortable saying that. I feel like this actually is a very good renewal, considering when you're looking down at that bottom number, you say, really, the whole total is eight percent when you're seeing twenty fives. It's like, eh. So our loss record is going to make us very attractive in the market. And I'm telling you, we're going to market this next round and we're going to start in May.
Well, I was told we were going to market in September. So this is why I'm, I'm giving such resistance to this. Because what was told was going to happen, did not happen. And so I'm not looking at who to blame. I'm looking as to change our course and, you know, if we're that shoppable, I mean, if, if we're like, so we look that great, why aren't we shopping our insurance? And it has nothing to do with the company. It isn't personal. We had to make decisions on who to give the turf to and we just have to make the decisions and have multiple bids. This is not the same thing as betting it with multiple companies like we were told last September.
Right. And, and, and two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, we were dropped by Wright Specialty, which is one or another company that dropped us for the, the claims. And it was the claims history. And so, um, I, I agree with you. I think the conversation needs to be formed around. Are we shopping the brokerage? Are we shopping the, the filter? Glatfilter took us on at that point um, in two thousand nineteen. They have been, we have been with them ever since. And the good thing about Glatfilter, Glatfilter is that they, they hold all of our, all of our, uh, property and casualty, all the way from buildings to, you know, look on this back sheet, uh, crime inland marine auto, general liability, educator's liability, which nobody will touch with a ten foot pole. And, um, excess liability. So the one benefit of this company per se, um, that I will agree is they know us. They are able not to jack our rates up. Otherwise, I feel like we would be talking about a forty thousand dollar increase and we may be back at the same spot. So that just is, is a conversation that we need to have as a team. And if we want to bid the brokerage, if we don't think we're not satisfied with the result, fine, if we need a bid and have more, I think I'm going to have more time to work with our broker to get things done in an appropriate manner. So I do agree with everything you're saying.
But we, we had a large increase last time with a significant increase in our deductible. And we shouldn't have had, uh, taken, we took two hits. We doubled our deductible and we still had a higher increase and it'll take me a minute to go back and look and for the time and everybody else. I won't.
Feel free, call me.
Um, yeah, but the problem is you want this approval tonight and you know, I, I'll always respect the majority of the board's decision. I'm going to vote no, and I'm just explaining publicly why I'm saying no to that. So.
Okay.
I have no other discussion.
Just, I just want to say, I've been here through this whole thing. I've been here six years. Uh, this is very, very helpful to me. And I think it's very helpful to see how much, um, I mean, I've had three big bond movements since we've been here. We've built a lot of stuff. And so, you know, we went from eighty five thousand in our blanket buildings up to a hundred and forty seven. And that's a big reason, I mean, that we have went up. Yes, have we not went out? I know Ian, when he was in here, Joe, he started to talk and he talked with Donelli and worked with them. I think, I understand what you're saying about the, that we've maybe been promised, but we've had three people in this position in the last. So I'm just asking for a little grace to, to them. Um, I think eight percent, I like, I've heard other schools to say twenty five. I think we did get nobody wants eight percent, but we had sixteen percent last time and sixteen and twenty six before. So uh, in percent premium change. So I'll, I'll take eight percent. I see what you're saying, but I also want to.
We still have our due diligence to public tax dollars.
Uh, uh, well.
Yeah, that's all.
Fine. I understand the comment. It's, but uh, we're, we're having a discussion about changing brokers.
I'm not asking to change brokers. I'm saying shop out the brokerage.
You're talking about shopping out the broker.
And what we were promised, and we've had two different public conversations about it.
Yeah, well, understood, but your assumption is that if we change a broker, that they would go to a different entity.
No.
A different insurer.
That's not even what I said. I gave the example of even Whitney could shop and Susan could shop. They may shop the same company, but their level of insurance changes their rates that they may get. So that's the purpose of a broker shop. So but we don't have to keep beating the dead horse. The majority, whoever, the majority.
This is in regard to the insurance needing to be changed and we needed to shop the insurance. Or are we saying we need to shop the broker? Those are two, two different things.
Our insurance was shopped out. So we didn't just go with one insurance person. That what Johanna's point is, is we we leveraged a single brokerage to shop that out for us. And different brokerages have different access to different insurance companies and different insurance packages. And so from an, from one standpoint, we limit ourselves by going with just Donelli. We limit ourselves to what their access, what markets their access, access to. But they did shop our insurance out. We did get multiple people to look at it. Um, the difference is, is does Donelli have the best access to the best markets for us? That's the question that we don't know. Maybe they do.
And maybe they do. That's great.
But I think, I think for me, like insurance was shopped out, yeah, by a single brokerage.
We shop it out every year.
And, and the nice thing is, you know, to that point, we, you brought up, we have a relationship with this insurance company that, that we settled on. There's some value there. Our premium, yeah, it's going up. I mean,
so, so going up significantly. Over, you got twenty years, I think, working with the district. Consecutive. Um, school, school insurance too is, um, it's a specialty. And I would, I would just pound in on that as too is you can break all these things apart. Let's just say we went to Glatfilter and I said, hey, we want to take our property and go somewhere else. They're just like any other body. You see, they have that bundle and they're like, okay, you're probably not going to get the best rate from Glatfilter after you take away the largest part of property, which shouldn't matter to us. But those, those are just things that go into it. Um, it's a highly specialized field. When I said educators liability, with all the lawsuits pending in education and schools and all the misconduct, nobody wants to touch these things. And so these rates are just going boom, 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 boom. And not to mention, you may not want to hear global warming. I'm not going to say it out loud, but I will. It's climate change and all the weather that's creating these these incidents that are damaging schools and buildings and roofs in Missouri, in Missouri. And that's a hard part. And then another thing that I just am looking forward to, and I'm not to here to create anxiety, but as we continue to improve our facilities and do different things, I mean, I, I'd be even interested to see what would happen once the prayers get a hold of what we do to the high school. So, you know, it, it just, it's, it's a ever increasing. I don't think anybody enjoys insurance. I'm just telling you, in my experience, this is a favorable increase. Uh, you have a one hundred and fifty five million dollar blanket, which if you think of a blanket like per occurrence, if a tornado came and it took out the elementary school, you, a hundred fifty five million dollars. If the same tornado came out and it took out the elementary school through the high school, a hundred and fifty five million dollars, we got a problem probably. But we have very good coverage. I feel like the contents and the people and the buildings are structured are so we could basically rebuild them. Cause it's north of four hundred and fifty dollars in construction per square foot to build these things. So that, that's, that's the main gist of it. Those are the big pictures. And again, like I said, I you can call me anytime. We can have a discussion about it. And I'd be happy to talk to you.
Thank you for all your work on it.
Okay.
But yes, uh, Brooke, uh, we did shop out the insurance.
You did not shop it out. You shopped the same broker. That's not what the agreement was back in September.
I finished my statement. We did finish, uh, we did shop out the insurance. We didn't shop out the broker, which is what this prude has been asking for. But there is no policy that says we need to run out there and do that either. However, administration will try to achieve that. And that sums it up?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, next up, uh, MSA. M, do I have a motion to approve MSBA policy DFI two? Setting the tuition for district programs as presented. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, please vote. Next up, um, eleven point three, do I have a motion to approve policy JFCD? Student use of personal communication devices as presented. I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have any discussion?
Just want to, just want to know that this is the first and we're requesting the only reading state statute that takes.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. Yes, this is the one and only reading. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Never been so excited for a policy.
Okay, next up, um, says info action. We're going to approve this?
Oh, it's, mine says action.
Oh, sorry, eleven point, oh, sorry. My, my. Do I have a motion to approve MSBA twenty twenty five C policy updates for the first of three readings as presented?
Remove.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion for the first of three readings? If not, please vote. Next up, eleven point five, twenty twenty five, twenty point six, Board of Education dates. We have, are we wanting to approve this? Or just discussion?
We put info action just in in case you guys felt like it was need to, but also wanted to get those dates on your calendar. We aligned most things that we had done in previous years to this, where the same day as a board meeting, we have walkthroughs. Uh, the other one that we would, I don't think we put in here, but would want, oh, we did turkey and ham handouts. So trying to align things the way we did previous years. And if there were any conflicts or suggestions or requests to change, we'd be happy to tweak based on your feedback.
No, thank you for putting this together because sometimes we get to these board meetings and people have to bring out their phones and have a conversation. So this is a good baseline for us to start with.
I agree. I, I like the board walkers on the meeting day to help me to take one day off. Yeah.
Maybe add this in here a couple of times. What meeting was that?
On the board recognition dinner, would that likely be our board award night as well?
Yeah, we would do the board recognition, uh, someone that you guys chose at the five o'clock dinner. Then we would transition to the PAC for the elementary recognition.
Do we have a new teacher, new staff?
You don't see it on there, but your night's going to be fun filled on September seventeenth. So we're going to have our groundbreaking, we're going to have our, our new staff welcome as well as our board meeting. We
That's good.
We assume that doing it all at once is better than trying to spread it out.
Yes. And we lost enough time with the dinner. I know sometimes that's pretty tight. It's like a five PM. How was it last year? Last year, my parents had that accident, so I didn't know. We tried to change it last year.
I thought it was much better.
In the time, there was some confusion on the time. I will make sure it's not confused this, this year. I will make sure that it's out correctly. Thank you, though. If, if you feel like your time was
We'd start at five. Yeah.
We started at five. Yeah.
Yeah.
It was five thirty-two years ago.
Yeah.
So we moved it to five and then need to make sure and communicate that, start of that other time. More clearly.
Okay, so just discussion, I'm assuming. All right. Next up, twelve point one. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. Please vote.